Great.
Well, I was deficient of one thing. Did I introduce Sheila?
No.
This is technically our boss. She's from the DuPage Home Ownership Center. So I'll be in trouble if I didn't recognize Sheila McCann here from the DuPage Home Ownership Center. Thank you.
Okay, then, moving on, we have items to be considered at future meetings. We have the Economic Development Consultant Preliminary Report, Designing a New TIF Area for Phase One Study. And does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing nothing, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump right into the next one, Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. I'd like to call to order, let the roll call reflect people. All the members are the same. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th, 2007. And tonight, we just have items to be considered at future meetings. These are changes to ZBA procedures, model ordinance requiring community antenna television system to obtain franchises, RFP for zoning code and zoning map amendment, B4 zoning district. And does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of February 22nd, 2007. Will the minute taker reflect the state members are present? I make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 8th, 2007. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, report and recommendation on the 2007, 2008 budget review. And with that, I will, I'll hand it over to our city manager and interim finance director Maggie Powers to take us through.
Thank you, Chairman Winger. You all should have copies of this PowerPoint presentation in front of you, and those are for you to take home. What we plan on doing this evening is an overview of the general fund budget, and then department heads are here to talk very briefly about what's contained in their individual budgets. As each department head is reviewing his or her budget, then you can, I think that would be the right time to ask questions so we can clarify things and go through it all. But I wanted to give you the overview first because it's always important to know whether we're in a surplus or deficit position, and it's always important, it's always important to know what's been included in the budget. Just as a review, the general fund provides the following services: the police, community development department, city services department, which consists of street maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and then the finance department, basically, we handle all the money and the purchasing, and finally, administration, which includes the mayor's office, city manager's office, and the city clerk's office. So those are a lot of services that are going through the general fund and are supported entirely by the general fund. Most important thing, I think, to look at first in the general fund is the sources of the revenues. You'll notice here that 74.2% of the general fund revenues are taxes, and I have a further breakdown in a subsequent slide showing you what sort of taxes those are. But we do get a significant amount of revenue from licenses and permits, which would include building permits and vehicle stickers. We charge for some, some services, we charge fees for those. 6.7% is fines, that would be police fines. And then there's other revenue, and other is kind of a catch-all, but essentially, we might get some reimbursements, we might do some charging of particular items to another, another government, so that would be intergovernmental-type revenue. But primarily, the general fund relies on taxes, tax revenue. And here's a breakdown of what we've got in the general fund budget. Cable TV franchise fees are almost 1% of the budget, and I just want to mention the fact that the cable TV franchise fee has been in question for several years, and at some point, it will probably go away. So even though this generates about $75,000 of revenue for the city of Wooddale, it's not something we can count on to be there indefinitely. Second tax is a telecommunications tax. This is a tax that Wooddale imposes on telecommunications. Here, again, there is some, going to be some change in telecommunications tax collections based on how many people are going to take the option of voice over Internet as opposed to using their telephones. Very difficult to judge how quickly that trend will progress, and certainly, how much impact it's going to have on each state. But, again, the telecommunications tax, which is over $1 million in the general fund, could be imperiled at some future date. Finally, sales and use tax, almost 40% of the general fund budget, and that is at a rate of 1%. We're not talking here about non-home rule sales tax. This is the 1% municipal tax that all communities collect.
Chairman Wesley?
I'm sorry. Now, that isn't counted as sales tax reform that was just passed, so that is, that don't go in that project?
Well, I'll, I'll show you that later in the budget, but we're referring to that referendum tax as the non-home rule sales tax. That's what the statute calls it. So this is a regular sales tax that Wooddale's always collected. And, by the way, when I did the revenues two weeks ago, I left out one slide. You'll see there's a, you've been given one piece of paper with sales tax. I thought it might be useful to just have the sales tax history, and you'll see that Wooddale actually got to a high of about $3.5 million of taxes, I think it was in 2002, and we're not there anymore. So this, again, underscores the need for future business development of a sales tax type. However, having said that, we still do get a substantial amount of sales tax here, and hopefully, that will continue.
Mr. Mayor?
When I was looking at that, I was a little disappointed. When we did the industrial sales tax or allowing sales in the M1 area, I think we were all hoping that we were gonna see a jump, and that apparently is not happening, which at some future date, we may need to talk about some kind of program to advise the industrial community that that's available to them to try to build up these revenues, but that's a discussion probably for another night. But if we could put that on a future agenda as to how we can make the industrial park aware that they can now do sales in the M1 district, that'd be helpful.
Chairman Suback?
Maggie, I know you weren't here in 2002, but any idea, looking at past forecasting of why we were able to get over 3.5 million? Is it just the economic times?
It most likely is businesses who have left Wooddale. As you know, Wooddale is not a home rule community, so we are unable to get a breakdown of sales taxpayers by company. However, the new administrative analyst in the finance department has recently completed a study of all the licensed businesses in Wooddale and has managed to attach the SIC code, which is the code that the Department of Revenue uses to break up businesses into their sales tax categories. So I will be taking the 2006 calendar year sales tax report, which I just received yesterday, and showing you how much sales tax was generated by which businesses. I won't be able to tell you how much each business generated, but at least I can tell you which businesses are included under those codes. And that may help some of you understand what businesses are no longer here. But that's, that's always the, the problem. When you don't know who your primary taxpayers are, you can't be alert to the fact that they might be looking elsewhere.
And it could really be in the industrial park that we've...
Very likely. Yeah, yeah. So that is, sales tax, we are focusing a lot on sales tax, and this was a very important thing that we did this year on the business licenses, asking the businesses to provide the SIC codes so we could begin to know who is in what category from a Department of Revenue standpoint. The next category is per capita taxes. That's basically the income tax. You may remember that the state of, the state of Illinois Department of Revenue awards sales or income taxes to communities based on their populations. It has nothing whatever to do with how much income tax is paid by the residents of a community. And so this is entirely dependent on the state of Illinois continuing to share those revenues. But it is 15% of the general fund budget. Finally, we have the property tax. It's about 28% of the taxes that are collected, not 28% of the total revenues, but just of the taxes. And this year, the property tax rate is down again from, I think it was 3882 to 3.3774. It, there is a slide that, that I have on that, but I, I wanted you to be aware that the sales tax, or the property tax in Wooddale has essentially stayed flat. That is due to the tax cap, where communities are not allowed to exceed or increase their levy beyond the change in the Consumer Price Index, which the county advises us of this every year. On top of that, we, the only growth we're going to get is from true growth in the community. So the rates, the rate has been rather stable, and it has dropped just a few mils for the, the 2006 levy. The other thing to remember about property taxes is that Wooddale paid off its general obligation bonds in 2000 and, I think it was 2005. So that used to be a line item on the tax levy and is no longer. So essentially, people are just paying for the general categories that have always been present on the property tax bill. This is a breakdown of the fund expenditures. You'll see personnel is almost 77% of the general fund budget. That includes salaries, it includes benefits, it includes health insurance. This is a service organization. It is expected that the personnel costs would be the highest cost. You'll see that the, the smallest cost is other, and I think the only things we have in other are books and publications and subscriptions. They're something very small, but essentially, our biggest expenditure is gonna be personnel. The next one is contractual services, which would include things like engineering, also includes the general liability insurance that we have for, for the city. That's not the health insurance, that's separate insurance. And then commodities, of course, gasoline and supplies to run the city. This is a summary of the budget as it stands now. I caution you that this is the preliminary budget. This is the best efforts of the departments, but the very first budget we've put together. No doubt, there will be some corrections. There will be some omissions that will be discovered. Certainly, your discussions in this process will have, have a, a big part to play in what changes are made to this budget before it gets adopted. But at the present time, we have $12.8 million of revenue, and that includes a flat $2 million of the non-home rule sales tax. If you go down to the fourth line on this screen, you'll see the transfers out. That includes that $2 million going out to the Capital Projects Fund. And this is because it is the, it has to be used for infrastructure-type items. So we're, we're putting the money in and taking it right out, dollar for dollar, so that we can account for every penny of it and certainly demonstrate that it's been appropriately spent. That's why that number is so unusually large, the 12.8. And I will go through the interfund transfers with you, what's included in that $3 million going out. But you'll, you'll also see transfers in, and those are on, on the last slide. The transfers in are the, the transfers from the water and sewer fund, sanitation fund, the commuter parking lot. And these are for expenses that are paid through the general fund, and I want to call them general and administrative expenses. For instance, the, the telephone system for the entire city runs through the general fund, the expenditures for that. But the other funds get benefit from that. Postage is another item that primarily goes through the general fund. So we have charges for administrative expenses made to each of those other funds, and these, these have been happening for years. There's been very little change in them, and the total for this proposed budget is $580,000. The transfers out, I will show you on the last slide, very big number, but 2 million of that is the non-home rule sales tax. So at this point, we are at a $50,000 surplus, which I think is good because I believe that I've never come to you before with the first blush of a budget that didn't have a deficit. So I was pretty happy when that number popped up because I, I never know until I link it all together and finally look at the, at the summary sheet, which leaves the fund balance virtually unchanged, just by $50,000. As far as the revenues go, the, as I said, the property tax rate has gone down from 2005 of .3881 to .3774. And that's what, this is our proposed levy. We will not hear definitely about the final levy that's been extended by the county until sometime in April. But I have already, I've already reduced the levy slightly in the proposed budget so that we don't overbudget for it. All of the telecommunications taxes are included in this proposed 2007-08 budget. We have reflected the decrease in the vehicle license fees. This goes back to council action a few months ago where the fees had been doubled for last summer. Now they're back to what they originally were. So I, so I've reduced the revenue accordingly. There has been no change in business or liquor license fees. And finally, the revenue increases are 4%. You'll recall at our last meeting, I did talk about some of the new sources of revenue, and the departments will bring those up as they're going through their budgets. Not that, not that it's departmental revenue, but it is associated with their work. If the telecommunications tax were not included in this general fund budget, we would have a deficit of $1.2 million. So it is, it is...
Question on that? That was my slide, I'm assuming.
It's your slide, that's right.
In 2005, I'm looking at the budget, it looks like we put in $219,000 from the telecommunications tax into the general fund. And then in '06, it was $1,050,000. And then this year, we're 1.3% the entire amount, correct?
That's right.
What was the percentage last year? I didn't realize we put in $1,050,000 last year.
I think last year, we did 55%, 45%, but I would have to double-check that.
And the, the 45% then stayed where?
Well, it was put into the, the water sewer depreciation fund, which was finally collapsed into the water and sewer fund.
And the reason when we originally passed that was, the thought was to use that tax money to pay for some of the infrastructure, and you correctly pointed out to us over the last couple of years, you're really not properly matching, that should go into the general fund.
And it is, it is customary for most communities to use the telecommunications and even the utility tax for general fund purposes because the utilities are supposed to be rate-based, so the rate should support the operation.
If, if the estimate is 1.3 million, if it was 55%, 45% last year, it must have been much more than we collected in telecommunications tax. If $1,050,000 went into general fund, that's more than 50...
And it might have been 60%, 40%. I, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me right now because I didn't bring last year's budget to see what the amount is, but...
But even at 60, even at 60%, that's only 810,000. So it had to be, we put all but $350,000 last year into the general fund from telecommunications tax, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, we put a, a good deal of it, that's for sure. You know, I thought I might have noted this on my, on my individual slide, if you'll just give me a moment. 67% went to the general fund, and 33% went to the water sewer.
Last year?
Yeah.
And what, and we, what was our amount?
And prior to 2000, I'm sorry, I don't have the amount, but we were, were projecting for this current year that we're in that we'll collect $1.3 million because that is, that's, that's the total. But in '05, '06, we were splitting at 67%, 33%.
Okay, because it's, well, if I do 67% of 1.3 million, I'm like, I'm at like 9.04. So you're still about $100,000 short, but that's okay. It's, it's a trend that we've been going towards, and we're just kinda, we're there now.
I gave everyone else a copy of the slide, even though it was yours. Expenditure highlights, we have, we have several staff vacancies that have been vacant for a while. These were authorized positions but had not been filled. Those have been filled. I'm gonna go through a tally with you that shows every position in the city for all funds tonight. We decided to do them together so you can see the whole picture of employment, even though we're only covering the general fund expenditures tonight. We do have some facility and repair, repairs and improvements included. The city manager's gonna go through that with you in the central services budget. The ending fund balance equals about 10 months of operating expenditures. You may recall that the state of Illinois recommends about eight months, so we're in good shape there. We have included some retroactive salary adjustments, but we do not have a final contract settlement with local 150, so we certainly anticipate some changes in that.
Chairman Wesley?
I'm sorry. Is the, back on that other slide with the, the final contract settlement, the, the money would not come out this year's?
Well, the retro part will, hopefully. If we, if, if the contract gets settled before April 30th, the retroactive increases, which would have to go back to '04, '05, would be paid in this current year. We did put some monies aside for the current fiscal year that we're in. We didn't know what amounts, but we put in...
We still, I mean, bottom line...
We put in around number.
We, you put a ballpark number in there.
Exactly. And now, going forward for '07, '08, we have used, we have based the increases on the city's latest offer. Those are reflected in there, okay? So, so we're just basically waiting for things to be settled. We have a, we have a change, a total change in full-time employees, decrease of two people, and we have a net change in part-time of an increase of three. If you look at that schedule that's on the legal size paper, I have one of the positions marked with pink. That was the administrative assistant. This was a position that was in the administration department that used to be full-time and has now become part-time. Then further on the page, you'll see a blue stripe that indicates another executive position. That was a full-time position that's been completely eliminated. And finally, you'll see under seasonal workers, a square in yellow that shows that the seasonal workers and city services have gone up from three to five. But overall, compared to the current year that we're in, we were at 103 full-time this year, and by that, I mean 103 budgeted positions. You'll notice next to some of these descriptions that the word is open, that we are actively recruiting for those positions. That changes all the time. In fact, I understand there was a change in the dileride drivers. I already finished this before I heard of that news, so I didn't make that change, but these things happen sometimes. So you'll see where we're, we may still be looking for a person to fill the slot, but we have budgeted the salaries in the proposed budget for next year. So we've gone from 103 to 101 full-time, and from 25 part-time to 28. And each department had, can discuss staffing levels if there are questions about that. But this is a, we were hoping this would be an easier way to keep track because last time, I think I gave you something like this, we were showing 75% of a person here and 25% there, and it was very confusing because of the way we had some people charged out of a different fund. Now here, you can see this is how many employees are on the roster.
Chairman Tomi?
So the bottom line, the, the bottom line, the difference between '07 and '08 is .5.
No, no.
Yeah, no, it is.
It's three.
No.
We went from 25 to 28.
You're going from, if you're going from, no, I understand it, but I'm, I'm talking about overall headcount. It's .5. Because if you go from 100, if you go from 103 full-time in '06, '07 to 101, now you're adding three...
No, you're down two.
I understand it, but you're, but you're adding three onto the, so it's a net, it's, it's really .5.
Yes.
Right?
Yep. But then if I start...
So we're down .5.
Then we have to look for that half-person, so, yes.
No, so that's, so that's good, so you've stepped by half, half ahead.
And, and these things were accomplished by reassigning duties and positions, changing some job descriptions. As you know, the, the city council did approve the early retirement incentive. That's been almost two years ago, and quite a few people took advantage of that. So those positions have not necessarily been replaced. Some positions have been combined, some, some have been completely eliminated, and other positions that were more needed have taken their place. But I guess essentially, the message here is that, that the, the staff has held the line on staffing and tried to be more creative about the job descriptions and duties of everybody who works for the city.
Maggie, how much time will have to pass before you can evaluate if that early retirement incentive worked or didn't work? Because the, the idea was that people would take early retirement, you'd be able to replace them with individuals with maybe not much, as much experience, but maybe at a lower rate.
Well, I suppose after this year, we'll know pretty well. We can make the, the comparisons. There's a little problem with getting the information from IMRF. You may recall that when I budgeted for the early retirement incentive last year, I put that under central services as a line item because I thought we would get a bill, and they haven't done it that way. Their actuaries have decided to blend it into our IMRF rate that we pay based on current employees. I'm not saying that they're not charging it correctly, that's how they're doing it. So all I can do is compare the rates and say that increment is the early retirement incentive. However, having said that, I believe that they will be able to, after a 12-month period, tell me how much of the city's obligation has been satisfied and how much is left. Because, you know, we're paying that over a period of years, and it's at 7% interest. So at some point, the city might decide to pay it off early, and, and, and we need to know if there were true savings. Having said that, though, you may remember that in city services, some new, more professional positions were added, and essentially, those dollars came from people who had retired, positions that weren't replaced, okay? So, so the net usually, for most communities, the net comes out to be not much of a savings. I guess what it does is going forward, it allows the, the city some maneuvering room to be, to hire opening positions at a lower rate. Because not only is, is the salary cost going up if people stay for a long time, but the benefit cost is very substantial. You know, you have people who, who start out and they get two weeks vacation after a year's service, but as they stay, they accrue more vacation, they have more leave time, and then you've got their health insurance benefit. So all of this ends up costing money. And, and so the early retirement incentive sometimes is a, a way for a community to take a different turn when it comes to running its, its operations. This slide basically shows fund balance revenues and expenditures from 2005 to 2008. I really just wanted to, to show you that the, the fund balance, of course, is, has been positive in the general fund, so that's a good thing. But it's sort of bounced around, and I have another slide that will show you that it, it's starting to stabilize if we keep these revenues pretty much the way they are now. Again, remembering that some revenues might be impacted by changes in the economy that we have nothing to do with, such as people going to voice over Internet protocols rather than telephone services. Here's the trends of the fund balance from 2004 through 2011, because we did project our budget out for another three years. Where you see the, the kind of gold color, that would be the fund surplus or deficit, but the light blue column is the general fund balance. And you'll see that we basically have it stabilized at a little over $8 million from 2006 forward. And, and we're at, at over a little 10, I think 10.3 million in expenditures this year. So we would be, that would be the, the right level according to the Department of Revenue to have in fund balance.
Chairman Suback?
How did we get such a surplus if we were doing all those road projects and spending all the money? I thought we were down a slide and we were turning the city upside down.
Because this is the general fund. We haven't done the Capital Projects Fund yet.
We did take some money from the general fund to fund some of those.
No.
Telecommunications tax.
No, that went into, we, we didn't take it because the telecommunications tax really never went to the general fund except in a very small way.
Okay.
From the time it was enacted, it went into the water sewer depreciation fund.
Okay.
So the general fund, where, where the, the fund balance was taking a hit, if you will, was that there were no new revenues. And, and so basically, you had stagnant revenues like property taxes and sales taxes, and no other new revenues coming in. I have another slide that'll show you a bump up in revenues that is very telling, and, and you can see why some of this has been happening. This is revenues since 2001, and you'll see in the box, I'm saying that the excess building permits for those 2006 through 2008 are $1.3 million. for those 2006 through 2008 are $1.3 million.